The city of Dublin Natural Gas provides the most cost-efficient source of energy available today. So for your home, choose the most natural resource, safe, clean, efficient. All new subdivisions around the Dublin area have natural gas available. Start reducing your energy bills today with Dublin City Natural Gas Department. Natural gas, the smart choice. Call 277-5048 today and let us help you start saving today.
Good evening and welcome to the TV 35 Dublin Lawrence Chamber Candidates Forum tonight. Our first Candidates Forum tonight will consist of our two candidates running for Dublin City School Board, Mr. Nelson Carswell and Ms. Sharita Habercham. Our candidates both already know the rules for this evening. So I'm going to say a short invocation and we're going to get our evening started with some questions. If you would bow and pray with me. Father, we thank you for a beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for a wonderful community to live and work and play in. And we thank you for our candidates tonight. I ask that you give them peace and calmness and more than anything, boldness and clarity in their answers. And I pray that their answers would all bring glory to you, that it would help us to further and grow this community in a manner that would be pleasing to you. Ask your blessing again on all of our efforts this evening in Christ's name, amen. And with that, I'm going to ask for one minute opening statements. We're going in alphabetical order and we'll reverse for closing. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Carswell, one minute for your opening statement.
Yes, sir. Four years ago, when I ran for this seat, I ran because I cared deeply about our school system and our children. We have great students, we have great families and staff. When I took this office, we had a $6 million deficit. We have flipped the script and now we have a $5 million surplus. In 2019, we were named the Charter School System of the Year. I am a 2007 graduate of Dublin High School. While I was in college, I worked as a substitute teacher at all of our schools. I also worked within the 21st Century After School Program as well. I worked at the summer school for two years as well. Folks, I believe you're in gold. I might ask for your prayers, support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Habercham, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Hi, my name is Dr. Sharita Habercham and I've been a resident of Dublin, Georgia for the last 17 years. I have over 23 years of verifiable educational experience. I've worked in my first introduction to higher education was when I left corporate as a software engineer and started my career at East Georgia College, which is now East Georgia State College. I'm a servant leader. Prior to me taking on this role of representing you all, I've worked tirelessly in not only our state, our nation globally, and also right here Dublin City Schools. I've ran computer camps. I currently mentor learning pods because of the pandemic, a lot of children are needing and parents are needing support. And I'm a very big proponent of computer science, which I've also, many times I've presented to the Board of Education and as I said, worked in our schools here in Dublin City. I'm a member of Liberty Church and I am part of our awesome praise team. My parents were educators. My children graduated from Dublin High School. I am a former dean, a former instructor, a former tenure faculty member, and I definitely want to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Habercham, we're going to start with you for our first question tonight. Our first question, there were a lot, there's a lot of conversation surrounding the recent investments at the high school football stadium. Some believe these funds could have been invested in other areas. Please share your thoughts concerning this investment.
Sure, thank you for the question. So at a time of a pandemic, of course, there's always going to be people wondering, you know, how money has been spent. One of the things that I hope to bring to this board is not only transparency, but also education to the public so that they understand how public funds are spent in terms of the Board of Education. As a member of the Board of Education, it's very important because we are the stewards of your tax dollars. And we want to make sure that you understand, and I know in education, there's a lot of education speak and sometimes it's very difficult to understand. What I plan to bring to the table is being able to talk to the people in everyday terms, maybe do some post-board meetings, that really show them how the COVID funds, and I'm sure that's what you're talking about, they can't be spent on necessarily everything. There are certain things that the legislature, legislation has said that those funds can be spent on. And I think that when more people are educated on how schools can use funds and how schools cannot use funds, then I think we will all be better off for that.
Thank you. Mr. Carswell, would you like me to repeat your?
Yeah, please.
A lot of conversations surrounding the recent investment at the high school's football stadium. Some believe these funds could have been invested in other areas. Please share your thoughts concerning this investment.
We put the turf in the bowl and that alone right there saves us money for having to maintain the shamrock bowl. We don't have to cut the grass. We don't have to use the, we don't have to paint the fields anymore. There are, by putting the turf down, it saves us a lot of money on the back end as well. We don't have to water the turf anymore, the grass, because it's sash of turf. The school board now is much solid financially now than it's ever been, since I've been on at least, the last 10 years or so. It was a good investment. The stadium looks beautiful and I invite people to come out to see it.
Thank you. I'm going to start with you on the next question. The next question, according to the Georgia Department of Revenue, millet rate listings, the city of Dublin school system charges one of the highest school tax rates in the state. Would you support rolling back the millet rate so city citizens' school taxes are more in line with rural areas in the state?
Yes, 100%. It is high. As a matter of fact, I was talking with Dr. Williams about this two or three days ago. Hopefully, we may not get it done this next year, but that is on the board to get done. That needs to happen. The taxpayers have bailed this school system out for a long time. And it's time we give back to the taxpayers. Thank you.
And forgive me, but Dr. Habercham, I want to refer to you as this doctor. You've earned that and so forgive me for that. And the question was, according to the Department of Revenue millet rate listings, the city of Dublin school system charges one of the highest school tax rates in the state. Would you support rolling back that millet rate so that citizens would pay taxes more in line with rural areas in the state?
Thank you. So as a citizen that does pay those taxes, I completely understand. As a charter system, one of the aspects of a charter system that sets it apart from other systems is the focus on student achievement. I do recognize that according to GOSA, for the last three years, not last year because of the pandemic, they were not able to get all of that data in. I do realize, and most of you probably realize this as well, that the Dublin City School System did not receive the highest financial start rating, which essentially means that we spend more money per student. However, that student achievement is not seeming to continue to go up or in line with what GOSA said. So as a board member, I am committed to student achievement. So if rolling that back and we can still continue to improve our student achievement, then I'm all for that. But again, as a charter school system and with my experience, my experience has been with student achievement, I am not interested in anything that is going to negatively affect our students because our student achievement affects economic development. And according to the Georgia Department of Excellence, Lawrence County has lost a lot of jobs. And the two main areas of the last five years and the two main areas of growth are going to be in healthcare and technology. And our students, our scholars, our community, we deserve to make sure that our kids are qualified and prepared for those careers in technology and those careers of health care.
Hi, I'm Dr. Dustin Gay. I'm a local orthopedic surgeon with Houston Clinic Orthopedics and we'd really like to invite everybody to come out to our new office facility to take a look at it. It's a larger space with physical therapy and we're just excited to have it and we'd love for people to come out and visit us.
Come by and see us today at our brand new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
Discuss how or even if Dublin should utilize the college and career academy going forward.
The college and career academy, my background, its education as an instructor full-time, started with the technical college system in Georgia a couple of years ago, a long time ago. And we brought career, TCSG sort of brought the idea of college and career academies on board because it's a wonderful way for students to get skills, specialized skills, skills that are relevant to the area of that career academy. And they can get those skills, get training, their parents don't have to pay them. As a matter of fact, I spent three years as a director of dual enrollment, working directly with college and career academy. I thought that they were a very good idea when it was officially started. I continue to think that career academies are excellent idea. However, you have to make sure that those pathways that are being presented at those career academies are really going to benefit the students. Either it's going to lead to some post-secondary option or they're going to be able to get some credential and then they can go to work and provide for themselves and their families.
Mr. Carswell?
I do believe we do need to continue with the college and career academy. I sit on the board out there. Wild Boar Machine is a great, is a great example of how companies work with our college and career academy. We have students that have graduated from West Lawrence High School, Dublin High School, that have gone on and now they have full-time jobs with these businesses. We have a number of businesses, Wild Boar is being one of them. And they continue to pour in to our school kids. And it's a valuable tool for us to have in a Dublin Lawrence Chamber. Thank you.
We'll start with you for the next question. What do you feel is the single greatest issue facing Dublin city schools today?
I would have to say re-acclimating our students back from the pandemic. Our kids have forgotten how to go to school now. They've been out a year and a half now almost. Some kids have been out close to two years. It's vital that we re-acclimate the family as a whole into getting back in the routine of coming to school, showing up on time, doing your work that has to be done. So the re-acclimation of students coming back to school will be number one.
Dr. Habercham?
Yes, can you repeat that question, please?
Yeah, sure. What do you feel is the single greatest issue facing Dublin city schools?
Thank you. Health and wellness of all that Dublin City Schools serve. Everyone, cafeteria workers, our great janitorial staff, all of our support staff, the teachers, the parents. We've all been living in times that have been very stressful. As a matter of fact, research has said and continues to be updated almost daily, the number of mental health issues that have been, some of them have been laying dormant in our communities. But because of COVID, they have increased dramatically. As a matter of fact, in the African-American communities and Dublin City Schools, the student population is primarily African-American. Only 3% of African-Americans receive the mental health services that they need. And if I talk to people, and I do, I talk to teachers, I talk to teachers at Dublin City Schools, I'm an endorsement trainer for the state computer science endorsement, so I talk to teachers, the number one word that you hear is stress. And so I know that that is the number one thing because we can put all the policies in place that we want, that look good, but we don't address the stress level, we don't address the human factor. And not only our schools, but everybody, because our schools are supported by everyone, then we're going to have even greater issues. So health and wellness is our number one issue, Dublin City Schools as well as our community.
Okay, and I want to stay with you for the next question. Do you support teachers carrying guns? Why or why not?
That is a very good question. In a school system where you have trained teachers who may be comfortable in carrying guns, then that could be an option. If you have a system, a school system where you have teachers who are not trained and are not comfortable, then that is going to be an issue as well. Because me, I am trained, however, I wouldn't be comfortable carrying a gun in a school system. And so if we don't have the support, and I said teachers, but I'm just going to say the support staff, if we don't have the buy-in of the staff and if they are not comfortable, then it is not going to be effective. And I believe that is one of those issues that there's no one size fits all. There is no one answer, if we want to be completely true. What may work in school A may not work in school B because you have a different demographic. Maybe in one school, you have a lot of military families or a lot of people that I should say have transitioned out of the military and maybe they're comfortable. And in another place, you may not have that. And so that's going to only add to the stress that our faculty are experiencing anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carswell?
I'm not in favor of teachers tote guns. We have resource officers at our schools. I don't want, I don't want our schools to become the Wild West. We have an incident, you know, teachers are, teachers already have enough to deal with as it is. I don't think asking a teacher to tote a pistol is the smartest thing. We have a resource officer, you know, like I said, that's their job to take out any bad guys, you know, maybe in the school.
They work all week for Friday night.
Go, go, let's go!
Go, Kentucky!
And when you call, click or visit Dublin Chevy Nissan, you'll see our teamwork in action.
Let me put your dream in your driveway.
Let's take a test drive.
The right vehicle, the right experience, the right dealer.
Good job, here we go!
And remember, Don Sells, Carswell, only at Dublin Chevy Nissan. You'll score a winning deal every time at Dublin Chevy Nissan.
Thank you. We'll stay with you for the next question. Even with a recent increase, Dublin city teachers are still not on level with other educators as to pay scale. Please discuss this matter.
We're working, we're working very hard every day to get our teachers back up to par. There's no beating around the bush. We have been in hard times. We have given our teachers what we can. Do we need to give them more? Yes, yes, absolutely we do. We will, we will give them more. But with brighter days ahead, it won't be long before we get our teachers back up on par.
Dr. Habercham?
Yes, so education is the great equalizer. Let me tell you quickly about my story. Had it not been for Ms. Ratliff, which is my teacher, she taught me geometry, or she attempted to teach me geometry in 10th grade. I was not the best student, I did not pay attention a lot in class. Some teachers would probably wrote me off and said, you know, she's just someone who just can't pay attention. But she noticed that there was something that I was very good at and that was solving problems. She introduced me to coding. She introduced me to something I'd never heard of. I changed my major because I wanted to go to school to be a journalist. I changed my major and I majored in computer science. I went on to get a double master's major, MBA in computer science. Because of that computer science, because of that teacher, I went from poverty-stricken situation to being able to, I'll just say, be okay. So teachers change lives. Every doctor started out with a teacher. Every police officer started out with a teacher. Every teacher started out with a teacher. And I can sit up here and say, if it was not for a teacher, I, my life would not have been what it is today. And so teachers deserve to get paid what they are worth. They are college graduates, many of them have master's degrees. And I've been a professor. I've actually taught in high school and I've worked with my after-school programs. And teaching is not easy. It's definitely not easy. They want to be there and they care, therefore, they should be compensated.
Thank you. Dr. Habercham, critical race theory, should it be banned or promoted in our schools? Why or why not?
People need to be educated on what critical race theory truly is. As a scientist, a theory is simply my beliefs based on facts that I have put together. Any theory can be debunked if someone else comes around and adds some more facts. A couple people get together and say, okay, well, these facts actually outweigh these facts. That is what critical race theory truly is. That is what any theory truly is. It is a framework. It is a framework. What should we teach our students? We should teach our students critical thinking skills, which is what is required in order to come up with their own theory. We should teach them the scientific process. We should be open, we should be transparent, we should teach them to be kind to each other. We should teach them to love each other. But we should also teach them the truth and what critical race theory truly is and what it's not. It's time out for fake news. We have too much of that going on and we need to be very clear and concise about things. And someone needs to stand up, especially in situations like that, and educate our kids. This is what it is, this is the information to support that. And then maybe one day you can go on through the work, through the scientific process and then contribute your own thoughts to the scientific.
Thank you. Mr. Carswell?
If we just teach history, that should take care of it. So my answer in short is teach history how it should be taught.
Okay. And the next question, I'll start with you. I know there's a lot of discussion today about religion in schools. Share your views on religion in schools.
I wish we could. We probably have a lawsuit waiting for us. I wish we, we do need prayer back in schools. Prayer is vital, it's important. I pray. I don't pray every day like I should, but I'm a Christian. Do I want prayer back in school? Yes, 100%. But we will probably have a lawsuit waiting on others' side.
Dr. Habercham?
Yes, can you repeat the question?
Yes, just religion in schools. Would you share your views?
So yes, I went to a public school, graduated from a public school, and religion was taught. Religion is just a social science, just like history, it's like anthropology. We can teach various religions. We could teach Christianity, which I am, are Christian. We can also teach other leg, or other religions. So to say that we can't teach a religion in school is to say that you can't teach social science. And you can. We teach it in our public colleges. Again, it's a social science. But on the prayer piece, which is not necessarily the question I think you've asked, prayer has not been out of schools. Because where there's praying people, prayer is there. It's definitely not been out of the school that I've been in, or I know many of our people in Dublin City Schools, because you can pray and not necessarily pray over the loudspeaker or openly pray or openly pray. You can pray through a closet. I walk around the track, run around the track, and I pray for our students. So prayer, if it's in your heart, and I'm speaking from a Christian standpoint, if it's in your heart, you're going to pray. And I'm there and the Christ that lives in me, is it me? And I'm there, and it's going to be there. To answer your question, prayer or religion, I should say, which is what you asked, is a social science and we can study it just like we can history.
Thank you. We'll start with you for the next question. LGBTQ movements and transgenders in sports are issues that our students are faced with today. Do you support these movements, or do you stand against them? Why?
So the, I believe it's the Georgia High School Association has made very clear, or at least for right now, very clear rulings on who can participate in what sport, if it's a transgender person, what a transgender male, what sport he or she can participate, if transgender man, what sport that person can participate in, and if it's a transgender woman, or young lady, what sports they can participate in. So they take care of those aspects of it. There are many other challenges that are rising up through our court system, and as a matter of fact, I was reading about that this morning, there is no clear answer right now legally, because some courts are ruling one way, some courts are ruling others. So we don't have consistency across the board. But here's what I am very clear on, that all students, because it's a federal statute, all students must be treated fairly. All students should be treated with respect. And going back to the Christian aspect of it, my Bible tells me to love all my neighbors, regardless. So Sharita's personal standpoint on it is, we have to love. We have to love, and we have to be fair, and we have to follow those people who are charged with making those decisions in the court of law. Whatever those decisions are, as a board member, that is what we would have to uphold.
Okay. Mr. Carswell?
Having a male turn female, and then want to run a trap against our females, I am not in favor of that at all. It's not fair, it's not right. There are certain aspects that it can be done fairly. But competition needs to be done fairly, and if we can do that, then I'd be in favor of this.
Drop by today and see the winning team at Lakes Alignment and Truck Service in East Dublin. We're now offering tires in service for all your agricultural and farm equipment. At Lakes, we've got you covered on the road or in the field. Big truck alignment, industrial tire pressing, and commercial truck service. So join the winning team at Lakes Alignment and Truck Service, and now offering Agricultural Tire Service. No matter where you are, call 272-4230, and our service trucks are rolling to you. Lakes Alignment and Truck Service, serving you at the same location, right behind Thomas Auto Supply since 1954. So grab the family and head on out to the field. This football season, you're sure to be on a winning team when you join the team at Lakes Alignment and Truck Service, and now Agricultural Tires and Service. Lakes Alignment, East Dublin.
Okay, last question, I'll start with you because we're going to let you start with the closing statement. Last question, if you can keep it to two minutes, please. Dublin City Schools need blank more than anything else. Fill in the blank.
Repeat that?
Dublin City Schools need blank more than anything else. Fill in the blank.
We need, we need involvement from the community. I dare folks to stick your big toe in the Dublin City School system to see what we're doing, because if you do, then we got you. It is, we have a lot of positive things going on within our school system. Brighter days are ahead, but we need, we need community involvement. That would, that would go hand in hand with everything we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you. Ms. Heversham? Dr. Heversham?
Yes. Dublin City Schools need our support. We need, as Mr. Carswell said, community involvement. We need community input. We need it in all areas. Not just sports, not just the arts, we need it in all areas. There's a curricula that you don't like, or you don't understand, and we, you need to say something. We are only going to be as great as, we're only going to be as great as we can be if everyone is going to be involved. This is a school system that does serve, or have a lot of diverse constituents, and if everyone wants our students, wants our scholars to be what they can be, everyone has to lend a hand. And maybe you think that there's nothing I can do. There's a lot you can do. You can volunteer, I know in COVID it's a little different, but you can volunteer. You can just sometimes talk to a student that you might see somewhere and just encourage them. When there are budget meetings where the board, you know, presents the budget for the year for public review, we need to attend those, review those. When the Georgia Department of Education puts standards out on the website for public input, for public review, and this is more than just Dublin, this is a state thing, we need to review. There's not a lot of input across the state, I know, because I've been involved in those reviews. South Republic Review, oh, we have 10 people that actually read it. So what Dublin City Schools need is everybody's support, everyone's involvement all of the time and in every area. Maybe there's something unique that you have, maybe you know how to quilt, maybe you know how to sing, then become involved in the after-school for the 21st Century programs and make a difference in a child's life, because we need you.
Thank you. One minute, please, on your closing statements, I'll start with you, Dr. Heversham.
Yes, so it has been my absolute honor to meet so many people that I have not met, even though I've lived here for 17 years, to meet so many people, and to share their concerns and their accolades for Dublin City School. When you elect me as your, and I am a servant leader, when you elect me as your representative, I promise you that I will listen to you. Education speak can be very confusing, and it can be very intimidating. I know because I transitioned from higher ed over into K-12, and it was very confusing, even though it's all education. You can come to me and you can talk to me. I am not someone who says something and then doesn't follow up with it. I'm experienced in this area, and I care. I do this when I'm not paid. I've been working with our students before I even became, jumped onto this campaign. I care about our students, I care about our community, and anytime you have a question, I am approachable, I understand, I'm in tune with our community's needs, and you have someone that's always going to put our scholars first.
Thank you. Mr. Carswell?
When I came on board, I didn't realize the difficult decisions that were going to have to be made. I'm not afraid to make the tough decisions, but they've been made. I've not been all around the state, the nation, like Dr. Heversham has. I've been right here in Dublin City Schools doing the work. I've been a substitute teacher, I've worked the summer school programs, I've worked numerous jobs at the high school and within our school system. Brighter days are ahead of our school system. The morale is better, and like I said earlier, I dare you to come and see what we have going on, because you won't want to leave. Thank you.
Conservative treatment options are typically where we start with both knee and hip arthritis. So if you come in to see us and your hip is beginning to be arthritic, or your knee's beginning to be arthritic, there's sort of a stepwise approach that we take. Anti-inflammatories, which are medicines like Motrin, Advil, leave are usually sort of first line. We have prescription forms of those medications that we can use. In our elderly population, that becomes a little more difficult because they have comorbidities, things like diabetes, or stomach ulcers or disease, that they can't take those medications, even hypertension. So we'll try to treat them with medications if it's appropriate. When it's not, then we go on to things like injections. So cortisone injections are, there's these things called visco-injections or visco-supplements, which are lubricating type injections that we can use to treat knee arthritis, as well as hip arthritis, to try to control people's pain. And a lot of times, we do that for years for people before they get to the point where those are no longer working and we're ready to talk about knee or hip replacement.